Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and by Mr. Conroy and a second by Mr. Connor?
Yep.
To approve the letter to Mr. Freeman. All those in favor, it is unanimous. We can move on. Okay, our first case this evening is going to be case number four one four six Rick Vale McGregor. And who will be representing? Yes, please.
Case number four one four six from the zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, twenty-six Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, February third, two thousand twenty-five at seven P. M. You hear the petition of McGrieco Inc. requesting a special permit required for section two oh three dash nine C to alter a pre-existing non-conforming use to convert congregate housing to a two-family dwelling per section two oh three dash seven D to waive required off-street parking setback and screening and per section two oh three seven dash five point two to waive required parking our width on the property of two oh five Taylor Avenue shown as lot thirteen on plot forty-five B. The assessor maps dated January one, two thousand twenty-four in an R twenty S zone. The petitioner or his or her representatives, any other persons desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you.
May I interrupt? Can you announce that the Sawmill hearing will be February, uh, no, I'm sorry, February twenty-fourth at seven P. M. Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a special meeting because of the holidays, so we've pushed it to February twenty-fourth.
So, so announced.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
February twenty-fourth, the Sawmill hearing will be heard.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, seated on case four one four six will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, oh, no, Kevin is not here. Yeah, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, and Mr. Wallace. And myself. And Mr. Dambrosia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here tonight. For the record, Rob Dambroso, attorney at law with Dambroso Law here in Plymouth. I'm here on behalf of McGrieco Inc. I've got Kevin Flaherty from our civil engineering firm, Flaherty and Stefani, here with me to field some engineering questions, if there are any. I thought I would kind of briefly walk you through this. I'll try not to belabor. I know you've got a long agenda and you've all had a chance to look at the plans and read the materials, but I'm just going to jump ahead to what, I'm going to start with the relief that we're requesting. So again, Mr. Conroy read it into the record, but just to be clear, principally, we're here to substitute one non-conforming use for another non-conforming use. Right now, we've got a seventeen-room congregate housing building, quite dense, and the proposal here is to convert that into a two, two-unit, two-family building. Now, to be clear, two families are allowed in this zoning district, so just to throw that out there. The reason that we're non-conforming with this proposed use, even though we're decreasing density, which is unusual, usually we're before this board or an applicant would be before the board seeking leniency and greater density, we're decreasing the density, but we're still non-conforming because of the lot size. So, again, one non-conforming use to another, but I think this is far better use if you look at the criteria for pre-existing non-conforming. Again, as you guys know, you know, the measure here is really whether the new use will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use. That's section two oh three nine C of the town's zoning bylaw. So, you know, planning board was favorable, CONCOM was favorable to the proposal. DPW issued a memo, addressed essentially all the comments. I think there's one or two minor ones that the plans have addressed or waiting for their final blessing, but we certainly expect to receive that and are happy to accept any ongoing condition relative to the DPW. So, we think we've got a good project here. Again, some of the planning board remarks were it's nice to see this density decreasing, not only for traffic and just intensity of use in this busy neighborhood, but also less taxing on the septic system, you know, because it is close to the water. The other relief items that we're here for are really more technical in nature, I think, and that's relative to parking. As the parking stands now, there's really virtually no parking. I'll go to the plan. So again, I know it's a little hard to, maybe this thing is not working, but, you know, the parking is basically, there's going to be four spots when we're said and done. Right now, I think there's only two parking spots. Now, again, if you wanted to get into this, there's this grandfathering concept in the zoning bylaw under parking where you take what parking would have been required for the existing use and then you take away from that what's actually provided. So by my calculation, I think we've got like twenty grandfather spaces because that previous use would have required twenty-three and there were only two. So again, if we were going on a technical basis here, I think that the applicant could come forward with no parking and satisfy the zoning bylaw under that grandfathering calculation. But nonetheless, Mr. Vale, McGrieco want to have a nice project here. There's going to be two higher-end condominium units. The folks are going to want to have parking and he's going to offer two spaces per unit. So again, we're well within that grandfathered calculation, but there will be four parking spaces per unit. Effectively, the structure is being completely rehabilitated. It's not being razed, but it is being rehabilitated. Again, new siding, new windows, new roof. Again, everything that's going to be done will be architecturally correct relative to the period in which this was built. So I think it's going to be an attractive redevelopment, certainly much less dense. I'm trying to think of what else I can point out to you. There's going to be, you know, a couple of decks on the back. There's an existing kind of decrepit deck. I'll show you what's there now. This is the front, as you can see, you know, not the, not the most beautiful aesthetically pleasing structure. It's going to look a lot better. Here's the rear. Whoops. I don't know why it's jumping ahead on me. So you can see there's a deck here now that's going to be kind of redone and then this deck here is going to be slightly expanded and redone, which again, conservation was fine with. I'm trying to think of what else I can share with you. We've got some architecturals here. Again, I know you've had a chance to sort of look through all of these. I guess the only other thing that I would mention is that Rick's been kind of kicking this one around since the summertime and the reason that he hasn't moved on it earlier was he wanted to make sure that all of the people rooming there had a place to go. And it's my understanding now that there's only one person in this building who's a staff person. All the residents have been relocated and I think it's safe to assume they'll be in much better facilities. This, this existing structure is in a bit of disrepair. There's some mold issues, some leaking, et cetera. Again, can't comment on where folks have gone due to HIPAA and privacy reasons, but everyone has left and again, I think they'd be in a far better stead where they've gone to. So again, that's an overview of the project. Happy to field any questions. Kevin's here. If you've got any technical items. I don't want to drone on those, so I'll just put it back to sort of the layout that you guys have seen and are familiar with and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions anyways. So one, I see when I, when I was looking at the plans, this would be Flaherty, I would say. We're looking at the plan, so you have unit A is mapped out in the interior. Unit B wasn't. Are they identical or what's going on with unit B?
You're talking about the floor plans, Mr. Leary? Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, my understanding is, and again, I don't think I have detailed floor plans, but I think they're going to be
Identical?
Identical, yes.
Now, are they separated down in the basement? I noticed they have a stairway that goes down the middle. The reason I ask that is there are two means of egress coming out of each, one out of each side or?
So here we go. Actually, I do have this architectural view. Can you, I don't know.
Right. See, it's only one side and the other side is just more or less blank.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I think, I assume the configuration will be similar. And I'm sorry, the basement question I didn't quite.
Was, okay, so I noticed the stairways going down from each side goes through two doors, one that goes to each, which I'm going to assume would be locked, but for the other one. Is there two means of egress? They have to be direct means of egress.
Two, two means to egress from the basement?
Yeah, well, if they're separated.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a partition wall there. I don't know. Do you have?
I mean, the bill.
Yeah. So BF Architects, Kevin Flaherty from Flaherty and Stefani, BF Architects put together all the plans, so I think that was in discussions with, and these are, I think, preliminary floor plans to the best of my knowledge. So when they go forward, if there's an approval granted, they'll come up with construction sets, which obviously wouldn't meet building code.
It's a building apartment issue. Then the other thing, so, you know, like you were saying, so there's a four-bedroom on a multi-family has three spaces, so really this is supposed to have six for, for, you have four now?
Right, so yeah, if this were a new virgin ground development, you would, six would be required. We would need a waiver. So I think that, again, that there is a relief item cited here in the zoning denial that says waive parking area width setback and screening. I think the reason it doesn't mention a waiver of number of spaces is for that grandfathering reason that I've mentioned to you.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, when you showed the other plans, I noticed is some green space and thought, has there been any thought to making those drivable, like, you know, grass pavers, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and in fact, I think the plan, so there was a comment in that DPW letter, Mr. Leary, about, I think the DPW didn't want the crushed shells, so we are going with pervious pavers in that area.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, and I think the lawyers' plans show that, right, Kevin? They've been revised to reflect that. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm awesome.
Okay. Ed, any questions?
What's the parking count again?
Four spaces being provided.
Four total.
Yeah, which is an increase from the two that's there, but four.
We have two now on the left side.
Right. Two total now, going to four with the new.
Does that circular driveway, does that go out the other side? That's someone else's property, isn't it?
Correct, yeah, it's really one, one way in and out.
You won't be using that. Okay.
Yep, correct. Yeah.
And it's room enough for another tower above it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I would like to see.
In that grassed in area, if you put, you know, drive on pavers, keep the grass, but drive, again, because if you, you're so close, you know, in the multi-family, you've got four bedrooms, supposed to have three spaces, so you're only needing six.
Right.
If you've got four, you only have two extras, then you'd be
Right.
to where it should be.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, I think the expectation is maybe people wouldn't need three for a single unit, but be that as it may. I think that the way that Mark, when he cooked this up, you know, we, I don't think he could achieve the turning radiuses to get three cars in and out if we stacked three on each side. I think it would have been too difficult without backing out onto Taylor Ave to get the cars in and out if you did three on each side. I believe that was the rationale.
I sure would like to see the extra parking place. You know, difficult or not, they're going to have people visiting and things like that, and you know in the summertime what parking is like down there. So, so they got to do a little maneuvering and backing up. It's a parking place.
Right. And look, informally, might someone squeeze in there? Sure. I mean, I guess what I would reiterate is, right now, you've got seventeen units plus staff. I mean, it's a disaster right now. So this is going to be a vast, vast improvement in terms of traffic from what's there now, but point taken.
Mr. Wallace, anything?
No, I'm just referring back to the letter received from us in terms of the parking.
Mm-hmm.
And the comment that the capitalized letters does not have legal street parking and appears to be disingenuous. So I think it is something we need to consider and even put it in as a condition to find additional parking, because the only alternative is Taylor Avenue.
Mm-hmm. So, David?
Yeah, I, I was going to also follow up on the parking. You're clearly, if you look at the charts in our zoning book, you know, going from seventeen units, which potentially even if used, congregate housing would be one space for two beds. You know, the, this is reducing the parking density dramatically in terms of other allowed use. My question is, you know, we also within our bylaws ask the applicant, if they can't get the parking on the site, can they locate it on other property owned or controlled by the owner of the use and locate it in the same district within four hundred feet? So has McGrieco investigated or tried to find additional parking consistent with our bylaw?
Yeah.
Within four hundred feet?
Right, so, so again, I, I can, Denise, could you bring up the zoning bylaw, that grandfathered parking calculation? Can I run you guys through that? Because I think that, again, I think that's why Inspection Services didn't issue a denial relative to parking, because, like I said, we've got like twenty spaces in the bank for this project. So, point taken, and I'm not, I guess I am trying to, you know, make a case here, but we're not trying to dodge something. It's really not required to have any parking on this site. We could go with zero spaces here and turn that into a garden in the front. It would be crazy to do that, but by the letter of the zoning bylaw, that could be done, because, again, what you do is take away what was grandfathered. And like you were just pointing out, you need, you know, we needed twenty-three parking spaces for the existing use. We've got twenty-one in the bank because there's only two spaces currently. So from a existing use, existing non-conformity standpoint, we're plus twenty-one spaces. We're offering four, so we're really, you know. So we're really, you know, plus 25 now. So, so I, I know it's a goofy concept, but that's the way that the zoning bylaw reads.
So can you go through the grandfathering issue? Cause the-
Sure.
Planning board memo, the engineering doesn't mention anything about this grandfather issue?
Yeah, I, I think they were silent on it because it was, you know, it was not a grounds for relief, you know, but I'm happy to go through it. Um, I can pull it up on my computer or I, I-
Is that the only way it's going to work is with this grandfathering?
Well, or a waiver, right?
Or a waiver.
Well, we can give the waiver, but my question to you is even, take the waiver out, take everything. If you could, where that green space is, you, you, you put in the, um, you know, like I say, drive over pavers, leave it lawn. But with driveovers, we've done this before on other sites. Um, now you've got the two spaces, because they're actually multifamily, uh, four bedrooms, uh, three spaces per. That's only six spaces. You're, you're almost there now.
Yeah.
If you put the other two in those two green places-
Yeah.
You have it period.
No, no. And, and look, I, I think that Rick would have been happy to do it. Again, I think there was a technical reason that the, a 10-foot wide space wouldn't fit. I mean, if you look, Kevin, is that the, is that the layout line there? Cause again, I think that, I think that's the issue. This is the Taylor Ave layout is this black line here. So it's a little deceiving because it's green. Because again, as you know, the paved area is not always concurrent with the road layout. So you've got this, you know, public roadway layout here, but you're only paved up to here. So really, again, if we went 10 feet, you'd be, whoops, you'd, you'd be encroaching on the public roadway if you tried to put another spot here.
Well, we're, it's private, uh, uh, well, not private, but it's not a, um, sharpened center. You don't need the full 10 width, you know? That's what I'm saying is-
Yeah.
If those, if that space there right to that road layout had the paves, you can drive over and the grass grown to it, you've got it.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, we're more than happy to explore it. I mean, again, I, I know that we talked about it ad nauseam with, with Mark and Rick and they just didn't think it was feasible. Cause they would have loved to do it. I mean, this is not some beautiful landscaping feature that they'd sacrifice here, you know? I mean, it, so it's not, it's not a resistance to the concept. I thought it was just a practical issue of really just not being able to make it fit. But, you know, we're more than happy to accept a condition that, that will-
So Rob-
Yeah.
How's this? You know how I am about 10-foot parking places. That's exactly why they're on here now. I'm sure that that conversation was had many times and you're not going to get them.
Yeah.
Well, in a case, and I've said this before, where we, where the land is so minimal and these, if these are assigned parking places, a person gets used to parking in a certain place and then that, that one foot isn't as important. Okay? My wife could drive through an eight-foot garage door with a Cadillac. So that, my point is, people get used to a certain parking place.
Right.
So if we were to entertain reducing those parking places to nine feet, then you've got plenty enough room to get that, that additional parking spot in there.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think you could get one more space by crunching everything on that right-hand side. The left-hand side is only 26 feet from the building to the layout line. So I don't think, even with nine-foot spaces, you'd be able to do so. But on that right side, um, where that green area was, I think you could probably get a nine, nine, you know, slide something in there and put with grass pavers as well.
Maybe even put one in front of the other. It's more of a long space. I'm not really worried too much about convenience, I guess, is, is the fact that it would give them that, what you need for the parking. You'd, you'd make the parking period.
Right. And again, like I said, you know, I, I, this isn't some resistance to the notion of having more parking on site. I think, I think it just was not viewed as, as tenable.
Right. Yeah.
So.
Hmm?
Yeah.
What did you say?
Is there a reason why Mr. Veo isn't here tonight? Cause he knew this would come up.
No, no. He's, you know what? He initially said, let's continue it. And, um, and then he said he had all the faith and confidence in the world that Kevin and I could get this done. He, he, he's, he's out of the country actually, doing some, um, kind of charitable thing. So, um, yeah, that, that's why. So again, if, if this is a, a deal breaker, we can continue it and talk more about it. I think he was just optimistic that, you know, given the warm reception from planning and, and conservation and, you know, and all the thought we put into it, you know, and the fact that it really is, I think, a huge betterment that, that we'd be okay. But, you know, look, if, if it's a stumbling block, we can, we can take it up again.
I'm pretty sure this board, knowing Mr. Veo, that he would be willing to readjust in order to make the parking work.
Right. And again, what I'm telling you is, we thought about this long and hard and, you know, he, he sat down with Kevin's father and said, can we get six? And the answer was no. So, you know, again, Mark were here, if Rick was here, they could, again, I think it's like Kevin said, you've got 26 feet between the edge of the property and the road layout. So unless you're encroaching onto that layout, which again, informally, might someone do that? Sure. You know, but I don't think we can, I don't think an engineer can stamp a plan showing a parking space encroaching on a public-
Fourth of July, every inch of that property will have a car on it, whether there's a parking place there or not.
There might be seven on there in Fourth of July. I, I hear you. Yeah.
So, so let's try and make it as safe and as, as usable as possible. Any board members have any more questions?
You haven't addressed the, uh, the grandfather issue anywhere.
Oh, I'd be, I'd be happy to walk you through it. Um, again, I can, I can read you from my laptop. I don't think you can pick it up on the screen. Um, but I'd be happy to explain why I think that does away with the parking issue. I can, I can-
Where, where, where did you find it?
It's in your zoning bylaw.
Where?
I'll, I'll, I'll pull it up in just a moment. I didn't, uh, didn't print it out because believe it or not, didn't come up together here.
I've got one too.
Do you know where it is? Yeah, I know where it is. If I have my chicken scratch, I had some examples online of how the calculation is done. But, um, let's see, so what are we? 207- 2037? I just forgot where it is. Oh, there we go. Parking. Yep. All right. 2037. So I think that, and again, I've got a lot of hand notes on my hard copy. I should have brought it, but I think it's 203.7J. Uh, it's page 56 in, in Mr. Silva's copy, the zoning bylaw here. Parking spaces required. Off-street automobile parking spaces are required to be fully constructed, constructed sufficient for an entire building or structure at the time of its erection or first use, or at the time of an increase in the occupancy capacity over what was or would have been required by the original building or use as provided in Table 3. That, that's the language. So what they're saying is, whatever was provided originally, you look at that against what was required and that tells you what's sufficient now.
But isn't that originally for that use? And once you change a use, that originality disappears?
Arguably, but we, we have the same use. It's residential multifamily.
That would be my interpretation of it, that that, that exemption no longer holds because you're changing the occupancy and the designation of that piece of property. So-
Well, but, but I actually, I, I would respectfully disagree. Cause again, it doesn't, what it says is, the space is required at the time of its first use or at the time of an increase in the occupancy capacity over what would have been required by the original use. It doesn't say that the uses have to be the same. So in other words, if you had a shopping mall with 200 parking spaces and you turned it into a, a multifamily, you know, you might have a huge surplusage of parking spaces based on your change in use because residential has less of requirement than retail, for instance.
And, and, and you're right. And the reason I say that is, if you guys think back, that you guys have been here for a while, like me, when we did the Armory, um, was, remember all of a sudden we found out they were, um, grandfathered in for 200 spaces? I don't know where the hell you find that in Plymouth.
Right.
But they were grandfathered for 200 spaces so that he didn't have to come up with as much because actually he was grandfathered.
Yeah. I mean, I've used this provision on other projects.
But in the Armory, he went and bought the place next door to recreate his parking.
Yes.
So by the same ownership. For the Armory, he went and bought Clifton, 11 Clifton behind it.
So we could-
Increase the ownership. So he can go with, with David Peck's reference with that certain zoning bylaw.
Right.
And, and of course, the other thing that's in the bylaw is, uh, Section K, which says if you can't do it, you pay into the parking fund for the difference. So, so there's, there's different provisions within our current bylaw for how to deal with it.
Yeah. And of course, the off-street fund is for the GC and waterfront district. But again, you know, I, I think that, you know, there's a lot of uses from old, you know, just, just non-conforming parking in many parts of Plymouth where you've got these old uses that wouldn't be allowed to have such limited parking today. But they get credit for what they don't have, which I know is kind of an odd way to, to use this. But, um, and I know Lee Hartman is, is, you know, on the same page in terms of how that's calculated.
So my question to Kevin would be is, um, would the, if, if you filled in that area with the drive over pavers for the grass in between, um, you could get one or maybe two?
From, from the look of it, I think one. I think two would be pushing it because that second car would be too far out into where the, you know, the egress is onto Taylor Ave at that point. So it, it looks like you could put, you know, another one pretty flush with that layout line, which would be a 10 by 18 space right next to where that, you know, the existing car or the proposed car is shown. And then, you know, I don't think you'd be able to stick another car behind that. You just don't have 36 feet.
Yeah. So, but then you're only one short. You know, I mean, if they consider doing it.
It's just, it's just, it would just be about- Well, it is.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, again, I was just kind of murmuring to Kevin here. Go ahead.
You, you guys can have your conversation outside of the podium.
No, I-
Jason, you would like to weigh in on this, please?
The one thing I'd like to point out with the parking and the grandfathering and the concept of all of this is that the rationale is that this use, this building looks like it was built around 1930. At that time, it had a presumption of being permissible, right? Zoning came into play with some other parking requirements way after that. So that's what renders it now being a pre-existing non-conforming. And that's what allows for this pre-existing non-conforming to another. But there's not a specific number of parking spaces that's numerically accounted for in this grandfather, this used, that's grandfathered. So the determination, there's no relief for the parking because it's clearly less required for the new use than would otherwise be on the existing spot. But that, the decision is still mainly on is it worse or more detrimental than the pre-existing, including parking. So it's part of the board's purview. It's not irrelevant for the case, parking load, but it's not a relief factor from the public advertising. So that it's clear, so that it is not making it less conforming. It's rendering it more conforming, but there's not a specific number that we've kind of accounted for to say this space, this property has so many. Where we do that a little bit differently downtown with these businesses and in, in the parking fund in order to come up with a mathematical calculation of payments. So, um, it's true that the, the parking status here has some pre-existing non-conforming status, but the, the relief request is to render that status less undesirable, less parking demand would be here. And I think that's why there's no relief requested in the advertising.
Okay.
Again, it is well within your discussion, well within your, your purview to, to discuss whether the parking scenario is going to make things worse or better in an overall concept.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else?
So it's, is this disabled housing, like Section 8 or something?
I, I don't think it was Section 8 per se, Mr. Conroy, but it, but it was a rooming house, um, you know, so.
Was it for like disabled veterans or something?
No, it wasn't designated for veteran. Now, there may have been a veteran there, but it was, it was a rooming house. So it was, you know, it was units without kitchens, right? A shared kitchen, I think, shared bathrooms to some degree. Um, you know, but that, that's what was there. So again, you know, Rick could have come forward with a 17-unit apartment building and not have had to add any parking, getting back to the parking issue, right? Because he'd be grandfathered if you wanted to go completely like to like. Just to give you another example of how that grandfathering would work. You, you wouldn't say, well, now you've got, you know, a rehab building, now you need to add 20 parking spaces. That wouldn't be a requirement typically that you'd see due to that grandfather.
So it appears that this use is going to be more detrimental than the current use.
Yes, yes, I'm going to.
Oh, no, I'm do, so, um, I don't want to hold this up on just parking. So, I mean, bringing that over to the, the line, not getting into the, the line for the street, you could gain one more space by putting those in. I would think he would easily go with that.
Fire, fire haven't issued?
No. I think, I think that would be a possibility to do that without, you know, um, changing. And that's, like I said, that's the only spot you could do it right in that area.
And it's, and basically, I wouldn't care what, if it was just even the pavers. We did it on, uh, uh, Sandwich Street down in the center, towards the center there. On Tassanary's place, we did the, you know, and it worked out pretty good. You know, that way, when they need it, it's there, but it, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, sure.
So if we did that, I mean, I'd be comfortable that that coming back isn't informal. Um, and, and let's, the rest is fine. And actually, even that, I'm just looking to mitigate part of it.
Sure.
Well, we've got a ways to go yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's certainly, I think, I'm, from what I'm hearing, we all would like-
More parking?
That parking looked at. I was down there sad, you know? Whether it's grandfathered or not grandfathered, I, I think it's in our purview to see if we can make it a little better.
Okay. If the board doesn't have any more questions at the moment, I'm going to open this to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this hearing? Yes, sir. Please come to the, oh, you're gonna go- Sir, sir, come to the podium and identify yourself, please.
John McLeod. I looked at this property a couple of years ago. There was a garage parcel across the street.
Your name, sir?
John McLeod. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
There was a separate parcel across the street from this project a couple of years ago. It was part of the, part of that building. I'm just curious, is that still part of the project? That's all my question is. There was a separate parcel with this project, property.
Okay.
That would kind of eliminate the parking, I think, would help the parking.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
We will address that. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please.
Hi, uh, my name is Gina O'Neill. I am the owner of the property that's directly across the street, uh, 3 Williams Ave. I have spoken to Rick. I'm not opposed to this project in its, you know, it, it looks lovely, everything, all, everything looks nice. Um, I do care very deeply about what I'm looking at. And with all this discussion about parking, I'm now kind of like a little bit more concerned that instead of having a nice screened area in the front, I'm going to be looking at a giant parking lot, you know, directly across the street from my house. That sort of goes to, I, I'm also a little bit, uh, sort of confused about what the other, like, if this is just about, um, the lot 13, but there's, you know, there's sort of multiple parcels, including the, I, like, I would not want parking all over my area. But, but there are sort of multiple parcels that have historically been associated with this property. And to be, you know, to be clear, this property, I've, I've been across the street for, I, I think, 2021 maybe or 2022. Um, my grandparents owned that house 50, you know, many, many years before me. My understanding is that, you know, in all the years of this being a, you know, congregant housing situation, it was, it was used for like people that were not driving, right? So in, in my four years of living, you know, three, four years of living where I, where I do across the street, you know, I'm not looking at a ton of traffic going in and out and I'm not looking at, um, you know, at cars or a need for parking frankly, because these are very, very elderly people who had significant needs and there have not been people parking in, you know, anywhere near around. And so, you know, I, I understand that if it's now houses, it, there will be a need for parking. Um, but, but I don't, again, I don't, I don't want to be looking suddenly at a parking lot, whereas in the past, I've been looking at just a building. And I also, my underst- And I also, my understanding too, and I just want to put this on the record, my understanding, because I, because I don't know, right? I'm coming in here blind, looking at all this for the first time. I want to sort of put on the record too, my understanding of this project is that the buildings themselves, nobody's asking for the buildings themselves that are currently there to be, to be changed in any way, like the actual physical structure, make them bigger, smaller, well, smaller, I guess I wouldn't care, to make them bigger, you know, both that one and the one next to it, and absolutely most importantly, taller. I was, you know, I was reassured by Rick when I spoke to him on the phone that he had no intention of raising the heights, not only of this building on lot 13, but the one that's, you know, directly to the right of it, which, again, I mean, it is, this is a little bit confusing because that says lot 13, you know, there's lot 14 next to it. What I, like, my, my map shows sort of different things that I just pulled off the assessor's map on, online. Like, I'm a little bit confused about the property, like, it's 203, it's 203 Taylor, 205 Taylor, and a lot of that's just from being old, but I just want to make sure that nobody's, nobody's going to build up and block my view.
Ma'am, first and foremost, there is no law, bylaw, protection of view shed, unfortunately.
Understood. But I did see that it's 35 feet and, you know, so.
I can't, I can't address all of these.
Yep.
Problems or concerns that you have. That's up to the proponent and his engineers and architects and people like that. But we can't prolong this because of concerns that you're not even sure you understand yet.
Okay.
Okay? So I kind of get your point. We all get your point.
Mm-hmm.
But we have to continue.
Okay. That's absolutely fine. My point is, like, sounds good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, seeing no other people in the audience, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for board discussion only.
You're going to let him address their comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let, I'll let him. Go ahead.
You sure?
At your pleasure. So I guess to Ms. O'Neill's concern, yeah, this is going to be a gut renovation, I guess I'd call it. So they're going to take it, Rick's going to take it down to the studs, make it nice looking, but the structure is not, is not expanding. I'm sorry, Denise, is this still the same slideshow? Well, the only change was going to be like, I think, maybe 100 square feet of the deck to the rear of the property. So, you know, not going to be any taller, not going to be, the building won't be any larger. So I can, I can address that concern, you know, as far as, you know, as far as the lot number, this is number 205. Yeah, so I think it's a little bit confusing because a portion of this lot is dual system registration with the registry of deeds. It's registered land with Land Court, and it's also recorded land outside of Land Court. So depending on what plan you're looking at or what you look at in the registry of deeds, it could seem duplicative, but we're focused on number 205, which I think is lot 13 on the plan. I'm not sure if there was any other specific questions that folks had.
Is there parking across the street?
No, this lot, this is a standalone lot, number 205.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have for.
Mr. Flaherty, you're all set?
I think we're okay. I think Rob addressed most. Like I said, there's no footprint changes. The only thing we went to conservation for is the deck out back. So the front and the sides, all that's going to remain the same.
Okay. So I'm going to bring it back to board discussion. And I'm going to start on this end, Peter. Nothing?
No, nothing other than the, I'm concerned.
Okay. Michael?
I'd, myself, I'd be fine if they're okay with it, is putting in those grass pavers just to gain that extra space, and they come back in an informal, I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
Nine foot?
Huh?
Nine foot?
Whatever it has to be. I'm not so much worried about it because these are residents that, you know.
And they're assigned parking.
Right.
We just want it there.
You know, and it would get closer to what they really, you know, it only has to have six spaces if you go by the bylaw anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, they're, they'll be one short at that point, you know, or even if they can figure out a little better, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Five parking spots is fine.
Mr. Wallace?
I agree, five parking spots is fine.
You've heard the board's suggestions, and I think that we would like to, do you want to continue this or do you want them to just come back in an informal?
Are you comfortable with it, Kevin?
I would rather them come back.
You know, I think I just, I'd have to check all the boxes before we just agree that we can get that space. I don't, I agree with you, this, looks like this horizontal, another, you know, 10-foot there to the layout, but I wouldn't want to just make that decision off paper. We will definitely investigate to see if we can do that, though, in that space right there.
So you want me to continue the hearing?
I mean, if you're, yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you're asking for our preference, it would be approval with an, question come back informally, which I think you're going to want anyway, once we've got fully resolved DPW comments, you know, using best efforts to show a fifth.
But if we approve it tonight, we approve it with certain things, certain sizes and everything.
Right. Your condition, and again, it's up to you, obviously, your condition could be that applicant shall use good faith efforts to furnish a fifth parking spot, you know, and return informally to shows the same to the board.
Rob?
Yeah.
In your legal opinion, when have you ever heard a judge or anybody say, "in good faith"? Please.
We've seen it, Rob.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, no, I.
All the time.
I have, Your Honor.
The issue from the board is, the architect or engineer says he doesn't know if he can give us five.
Right, I guess that's my issue.
We can't do, we can't give an opinion if they're testifying, they can't give us five.
We're going to continue this hearing.
Okay. If that's, yeah, if that's what you want to do. I mean, again, my understanding is Rick would have loved to put six spots, you know, I think it'd make it more marketable and better. If he could have put six on here, I think there was a reason he didn't, but, you know.
Can I just ask one question to the board then? So if I'm hearing this correctly, if they can't put a sixth one, we would, you're ready to deny this?
No.
So, no, a fifth one. Or, I meant a fifth one, I'm sorry, I meant the fifth one. Because if not.
He can't, David.
If not, then I.
Right. I kind of go with what you're saying. I agree. I agree with what, what he's saying.
I do, too.
Yeah. So I mean, myself, I said it before, I would.
But whether we agree or not, I would love to see this project go forward, okay? But we still have to make a decision on specific things. And the decision is, we have to know if that extra parking place is going to be there or not. If it's not going to be there, then we're going to have to work on one way. If it's going to be there, we need to be able to put it into the documents tonight.
Well, so I don't think it's that different from when you'll see a DPW comment.
That's good faith.
Correct, but I think, you know, for instance, you'll see a DPW comment sometimes that says revise your plans to show a different diameter manhole cover. Let's just take that example. And you would say, okay, come back informally and show that. So plans do change informally, you need to approve them, right? So if we come back with a fifth, you could say, what the hell are you doing? That's encroaching on Taylor Ave. Or you could say, it looks good. It's, it's the ZBA's discretion whether or not to accept that minor change informally.
Not if we'd approved it.
Hmm?
Not if we'd approved it.
No.
No.
Because then it's a modification. So, Rob, you're wrong.
Okay. Well, how about we come back with landscaping, you say, show us some more landscaping, come back informally? That's a plan change. I do think it happens, again.
It does.
The size of a manhole cover and the size of an additional parking places are woefully different.
Okay. Look, it's your discretion, Mr. Chairman.
I'm, I'm trying to make sure that this is resolved.
Right. So again, if, if, if the board is willing to accept four, but would prefer five, you could approve with four, and if we come back with a fifth and you like it, you could take it, or you could not take it informally, but that's up to you guys.
And if we approve it for four, what's, what's your incentive to even go look to try and find a fifth?
Well, you've got my good faith and my word.
[laughing].
I think that would be a laughing matter, but I.
Nice try.
I do have some credibility, I'd like to think. I'm not flying out on next flight to Africa here. I'm here for the long haul, guys.
That's, I just, I want to make sure that we can get that fifth space in there. Everybody on this board is concerned about parking.
And, you know, all I can say is, we'll try our darndest. If we can't, and you're still going to approve it, though, then why not vote it tonight? But again, it's up to you guys. That's where I'm coming from.
Because then the incentive goes away.
But I'm telling you, we'd like to have a fifth. It's not that we don't want a fifth. We do if it's feasible. Yeah. But again, that's up to you guys.
If you want to do it that way, I'm not going to argue with it. I tend to agree with Rob, but if, if the board's position is, we'd rather see that first because of a good faith aspect.
It is. It is my opinion, only because of a legal.
Okay.
Because if they come back with a fifth thing, then that's a modification.
Yeah, it would be a minor. Well.
On a lot.
Okay.
It's not structural, but again, it's up to you guys.
I know, yes. I'm going to let the opinion of our attorney settle this.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, I go back to the grandfather language, and based on the grandfather issue, I could go with four, approve it with four, and I give it a 50% chance of good faith we get five.
Right.
Sorry, Rob, 50% is not passing. But, so I'd, I'd say, based on the grandfather, I'm okay with approving it, moving forward with the case, and saying, we'd like you to get five.
Come back in an.
Come back with an informal with your final plans.
So if there's four, they're 10-foot parking places. If there's five, we'll allow nine foot.
Okay.
Obviously, we want nine with five.
Nine foot with if we have five?
Yes.
And we might still be able to do 10-foot on the one side and nine-foot on the other side.
If you can get five in there, I don't care if they're all nine feet or if one of them is, or.
Yep.
Because they're assigned parking.
Yep. Okay.
I'm good with the compromise.
Is that okay with you?
Perfect with me.
I await the board's pleasure.
I'm just digging out, see what the condition was on that.
David's tax, here. You got it?
So we'd be adding a fourth. So my motion will be that we approve case number 4146 with one condition, additional condition, that they come back in an informal to show us whether they could squeeze that fifth space in.
Show us the parking layout.
Yeah, the parking layout, show the parking layout.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion by Michael and a second by Peter to approve case number 4146 with a, an additional condition that they come back in an informal hearing to show us how they have increased the parking from four to five. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Took a long time.
Thank you.
Our next case will be case 4147. I would ask the.
Court will be. Yeah. Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26 Course Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, February 3, 2025, at 7:00 PM, to hear the petition of the town of Plymouth Cemetery Division requesting a special permit required for section 205-2RR to allow the construction of a cemetery on the property of 280 Plimpton Road, shown as lot 27B on plot, plat 104. The assessor's map stated January 1, 2024, in a rural residential RR zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and/or any other person desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this case will be Mr. Leary, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, Mr. Peck, and myself. Who will be representing?
Good evening. My name is Jim Jackson. I'm a civil engineer with Par Corporation, and I'm representing the town on this project.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay. As you can see on the cover, the site is, it's a 37-acre property that was purchased by the town in 1971 for use as a cemetery, and we're here tonight to request a special permit for a cemetery in an RR zone. The proposed, you know, the full build-out will allow for 20,000 burials. Right now, we just have the phase one design, which is about 15,000 burials, so they can look through the drawings here. So this, this plan shows you on the east side of the property, we're going to construct a loop road through the site. If you look kind of the upper left corner of the limited disturbance, there is, yeah, in this area here, we, that's for future maintenance and operations building, won't be part of this first phase, but the loop road comes through. We've got cemetery plots over in this area. We've got some more in this area here. We've got columbarium area for, in this area. And then also, the design, the original design was going to be country drainage, drainage into swales, and then come down into these bio-retention areas, one here and one over in this area. In talking with the town engineer, Rick has asked us to do more of a, more controlled system with catch basins and Cape Cod berms, so we're revising those plans and working with Rick on that. So it'll be a slight revision to that, but still the same, we'll have the two bio-retention areas, and then we'll have one smaller one up near the road here. We did, we did meet with the planning board a few weeks ago, and they, they recommended approval of the special permit for this project, and opened any questions.
Gentlemen, David?
I have several. The West Plymouth Steering Committee has, has commented on this, but they mentioned that a sidewalk is in planning. Which side of Route 80 is the sidewalk planned?
Oh, there is, that's, that's a separate project, but it is on the south side of the.
Yeah, no, I just would, would want, you know, the design to take that into account in terms of connections from the sidewalk in, into the site. I just don't see it on the drawings.
Yeah, we're going to coordinate with them. We do have those plans for the new sidewalk, so we'll, you know, we'll try to coordinate because we do have the, you know, our road will be coming in here, which will break up the sidewalk and then over here. So we'll want to make sure when they do build that, we'll coordinate with them so that the, you know, the handicap ramps or curb cuts are installed and as it crosses our road.
Okay. And the second thing is, I did get a copy of the master plan. I'm not sure whether my colleagues here did. It was one of the things, you know, made available either electronically or. electronically or whatever, and I threw my wife, but I'm active in open space planning and hiking, and I would, you know, the master plan talks in several places about making sure there's pedestrian access and, and nature walks. I'm completely in support of this site being used as a cemetery, but I would like to, you know, have a condition sort of reinforcing pedestrian access throughout, which I will share with my colleagues. And the second thing is, Mass Historical Commission, you know, made comments, and the design has incorporated recommendations for Mass Historic. But I understand addition, more recent communications have come in from Mass Historic about the balance of the planning for the site. And again, I would like, and speaking to my colleagues here, sort of reinforce the importance of obtaining detailed recommendations from Mass Historic about the future phases. So those are two things, pedestrian access throughout and just respect for Mass Historic comments in the future, because it's clear you've incorporated, you've protected that center space...
Yeah.
Which is where archaeological remains were, were identified. But there may be other spots on the, you know, on all the future phases that we want to at least get their input and recommendations and incorporate them thoughtfully into the design.
Yeah, no, it's good recommendation. We, you know, we did work with Mass Historical on this phase, and we will continue to on future phases.
Great. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Peter, nothing?
I have a general comment. I don't know if it's appropriate right now or not. I mean, I, I think I remember when, at town meeting, when we approved this years ago, but, and I'm all, I'm all in favor of it, but never have I seen an engineering report like this one that basically said, everything will be satisfied upon construction.
No, we usually like this...
And we don't accept that from a private builder.
No.
I mean, like on things on site distances, distances and grading and stuff like that. And I just, I think the town should have to do the same thing. I mean, it's not necessarily to affect my decision, but to reinforce my decision that they've got everything right here. And they make, DPWs get some decent comments in here that I wouldn't want them to get all the way to their building part and then find out there's an issue with it. So I, I think those things should be responded to. That's it.
Engineering report needs some work. Edward?
I'll go along with both of my colleagues' said. I have no additional useful thing to say.
Michael?
Yeah, when I was looking at this, so in the main plan, when, in Phase One, if you will, so that whole thing, the circle driveway is going to go through all of it, right? So it will, that whole road would be in...
That'll all be in Phase One, yeah.
It contains all the other phases.
Yep.
Yeah. So I, you just said the DPW, because that was one of my comments. So they are talking about putting drains in instead of just the swales.
Yeah, we looked at swales at first, but then the comment from Rick, the town engineer, wanted to put in some catch basins at low point, so we're, we're doing a little regrading and also adding Cape Cod berms to direct the process.
And the, so when, when I was looking at the details on the plan there, it looks to me like if this ever had to go to paving, that what you're using for the subgrade and everything would be able to do that, right?
Yeah, the loop road is going to be paved.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be paved in the first, you know, in construction.
Okay.
Everybody else's. I'm going to now open this to public comment. Is there anyone? Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Good evening. Bruce Howard, 735 Long Pond Road. I am a member of the Open Space Committee, among other committees in town. I have to agree with Mr. Peck that access for, to the trails that exist behind this property is very important. In fact, across the street from the planned cemetery is the Parting Ways Cemetery and the trail system behind there. A lot of people park in that Parting Ways Cemetery, cross Route 80, and then cross the existing land, which is undeveloped now, and follow the Woods Roads back into the Darby Pond area, the bogs there, the protected area outside of the well. And it's important that we continue to provide access from Route 80 back to that conservation area. Therefore, I would ask the ZBA to consider the condition that the design and construction of Phase One and all subsequent phases include the provisions for pedestrian access to and through constructed cemetery areas, and provide footpaths which connect to existing trails on adjacent conservation land. I would also encourage the, that the plans include parking swales off of Route 80 to enable this access. Two other minor points, which may or may not apply to you. One is the fencing that would surround the property. So even if we do provide access from Parting Ways back through the cemetery, it's likely that people on foot would be blocked exiting the backside of the property. So I would ask that pedestrian gates be installed that could have signage indicating that the gates should be locked. The other point I wanted to make is that the initial plans called for the use of fertilizer throughout the, the development of the landscaping. This area is approximately close to the Darby well, and though it's not in the well restricted area, it would be important that the use of fertilizers be limited to perhaps the first year of each planting. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition? Yes, sir. Do you want to answer any of those questions at this point?
Yeah, we can certainly take those into consideration. The fertilizer, we can, you know, we can put in our, in the conditions that it'd only be fertilized the first year. As far as gates, we can look at the fence, but pedestrian gates shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue. We, we aren't really showing a lot of parking on our site, so I, I'm not sure if we can really add parking up on, on Plimpton Road. I'm, I'm not sure if that would be able to be done as part of this project.
Okay. Any other questions for board members? I, first, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the engineer and the boards. Discretion, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I'm just questioning. I, I understand what you're saying about the pedestrians, but I'm thinking to myself, okay, so once in a while, I'll walk through the Vine Cemetery. Actually, they very rarely use the roads, really, the, the walkways, when it really comes down to it, you know?
Yeah, speaking for myself, I totally agree. We walk through the cemeteries all the time. This language, which I, I worked on some draft language on it, is in part because there are, you know, in the master plan, there's nine phases, which for potentially 100 years of, of different phases, is right now, there are paths, you know, crisscrossing. And so, you know, just by reinforcing what the master plan says, you know, and yes, people just walk on the pavement, and then people drive, and then they stop, and they go visit a grave and stuff. So this is not asking for sidewalks. This is not asking, this is, it's more not block, you know, future access. As Bruce just said, you know, there is adjacent town conservation land, you know, immediately south of this, and just, you know, not, not block things off.
Right.
Just, just allow that access, and across the next 100 years, maybe build more. The master plan shows natural areas and lower areas being undisturbed, and we just want to, the open space-minded people want to make sure that that's still available.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? What would you gentlemen like to do? Have you, have you anything else you would like to add?
Uh, no, thank you.
And Jason, do you want to weigh in on this at all? Okay. I await the board's pleasure then.
Well, I, I would move that we approve case 4147, which is basically asking for our approval for the land to be used for a cemetery. And then I have a condition or two to suggest to be added, but I move approval of 4147.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And we, you know what?
We're through the condition.
Yeah, let's do the condition before we get ahead of ourselves.
Condition number two, they're coming back, and they're satisfied, but, you know, the condition's deeply down there.
Let's hear what your language is, David.
Okay, I would add a condition on pedestrian access, which is, and I can, I have a copy I can hand to Denise, but pedestrian access, the design and construction of Phase One and all subsequent phases shall include provisions for pedestrian access to and through the constructed cemetery areas, and provide access to existing or future footpaths which lead to adjacent conservation areas.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because...
And then I would like to add a second, which I haven't written, and I'd ask maybe working with Denise, that...
No, if you, if it's not here tonight, no.
All right, well, then I will write, I will write it, this about, you know, that as the applicant has agreed is to, in future phases, because we've already had the consult, consultation, the applicant, the town, which is the town, shall work with Mass Historic Commission to incorporate their recommendations into future phase design.
But do you understand if, if, if it's not said tonight here in the record, then...
I understand, but sometimes we, we put it there, but said final language to be worked on.
Which, good. If we can put it there, and then you and Denise want to get together with final language, but it can't substantially change at all.
And so, but my language...
Dramatic and things like that, fine, but what we approve tonight has to stay the same.
And that's fine, so my...
And actually, condition one does go to, they have to come back at future phases for approval before on one. Condition one is...
Yep.
Yes, but just, I would, just like the pedestrian access, I'd like to reinforce...
Yes.
Review with the Mass Historic Commission.
If it's there, then it's there.
Yeah, so, you know, the petitioner shall work with the Mass Historic Commission to incorporate recommendations in future design.
Write that down, and we'll, we'll... So there's going to be four conditions now?
Yes, that's what I'm proposing.
So three is pedestrian...
Access.
And number four is mass heritage. All right. And you are fine with those additional two conditions?
Yes.
Yeah, they're coming back. Yep, so I'm going to second his motion.
Okay, so make a second. And we added two conditions. Okay, I have a, a motion by Mr. Leary to...
No, Mr. Peck.
No, I'm sorry, by Mr. Peck to approve case 4147 with an additional two conditions, which are, one would be for continuous pedestrian access through all phases, perpetuity, as far as I'm concerned, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be hard-pressed to have that word perpetuity put in there. Again, that's up to the board. And this, the fourth condition would be that mass heritage will...
Mass Historic.
Oh, Mass Historic will have oversight.
Yeah, the, the language I've written, Mr. Chairman, is Massachusetts Historic Commission review and recommendations shall be incorporated into the design of future phases.
In my notes, just so that I can say, all right, now, what was that language? You know, all right. So are there any additions, modifications? Is everybody okay with the case so far?
Yep, I'm fine.
All right. I ask for a vote. All those in favor of case 4147? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're doing Manamit Avenue next. Yes, please.
Case number 4148. The Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, February 3rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Peter and Charlene Capone requesting a special permit required per section 203.9C to reconstruct and enlarge pre-existing non-conforming structure on the property of 9 Manamit Ave., shown as lot 4931B on plat 48 of the assessor's map dated January 1, 2024, in an R20S zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and any other person desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this case will be Mr. Leary, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, Mr. Wallace, and myself. Who will be presenting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Chris Sanderson with Maryland Engineers and Land Surveyors, and tonight I am representing the petitioners and owners of 9 Manamit Avenue, Peter and Charlene Capone. So 9 Manamit Avenue is a small lot, just over 2,300 square feet, located in the R20SL zoning district. Currently on the property, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling consisting of two stories, constructed in around 1935, referring to the, the site plan up here. This diagonally hatched area represents the existing footprint. So it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Currently, we do not meet the required front yard setback with the existing footprint or the side yard setbacks. So the Capones are proposing a, a full raise and rebuild of the single-family home. They want to substantially stay within the existing footprint of the dwelling, again, which is that hatched area. There are a couple components of the project that propose a slight expansion of that structure. The first being this little rectangular brown-hatched area. That is about a seven-by-seven addition beyond that existing footprint, basically just to square off that little existing inset of the house. And then furthermore, we are proposing a small little front porch with some access, access stairs, and then a rear deck with some access stairs. access stairs, and then a rear deck with some access stairs, and that is to have two means of egress and ingress, ingress into the dwelling. Currently, there's a little deck area and some steps that enter the side of the dwelling there, but due to limited space from the abutting property, it would be the preference to kind of relocate those two areas. Uh, so currently, as I mentioned, we are a pre-existing non-conforming structure that's existing due to the side setback and the front setback. So as you can see, the expansion that's being proposed does not further encroach on any of those setbacks, so none of those are being reduced in any way. The Capones have reached out to the immediate abutters. They do have full support from the neighbors down to the south as well as to the east up here. Uh, I believe we did provide some correspondence to Denise, and you probably all have seen that. Lastly, we have submitted a revised plan that I believe you should all have incorporating DPW engineering comments on the project, and we did receive a letter back from then basically stating that we had satisfied all their comments. So I think that pretty much covers it. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen. Michael.
Yeah, I just have a couple for you. One is, I noticed there's an easement, well, the fences on the other property that I assume is their fence, though?
Yeah, so over here, so this is just a passage easement. Um, it's probably been around, you know, since the property was constructed in nineteen thirty-five. I think that's just to allow either, you know, this abutter access, or likely the subject property access to their backyard, just because there's, there's very limited room. But it either benefits them or them just for passage on foot.
Oh, okay, because I noticed you've taken down the structures on that side, you know, the entrance and stuff anyways, which is going to give it more room. But I was just curious about it, because it really doesn't state what it was, or, or how, the width or anything.
Yeah, referring to the plan, you know, current status unknown, I think it was probably very vague, and I believe it's just for pedestrian access, either benefiting our subject property or the neighbor. I think it's as simple as that.
Then the other thing, too, is does this have any, any drains for the roof? I didn't see anything on there.
That's a great, great question, and we have discussed that with the architect. Due to limited space, so out back here, basically this whole backyard area is the leaching field.
Right.
And then we have the existing septic take up front that discharges gravity back to that leaching field in the rear. So currently, there's no existing, you know, drainage infrastructure with the existing dwelling. Um, you know, typically, we'd throw some dry wells in to, to satisfy that. I do know you guys always look for that. Unfortunately, just due to limited horizontal space, um, we obviously can't put any in back due to the, the leaching field. You need to be twenty-five feet away from that, uh, per, you know, Mass D P regulations, as well as ten feet off a property line, ten feet off a foundation. Uh, so, you know, again, with the existing septic take in front and the setback requirements to the foundation and/or property line, no room to, to put that subsurface. So what the plan is, is to have the, the roof drains, as they do now, flow towards Manamit Ave. You know, this is all a brick driveway area, so again, not changing the drainage pattern in any manner, um, that will flow onto the road rather than to the abutting properties and into the street drainage system, exactly as it exists today. Uh, now, what we discussed in the rear of the property, again, no current drainage infrastructure, um, was to incorporate rain barrels to collect that roof runoff just above surface, you know, fifty gallon rain barrel. Um, you know, a good solution and can be used to water, you know, landscaping on the property. We would put dry wells if it was feasible, unfortunately, just on a lot this size, there's, there's nowhere to put it subsurface.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, as I reviewed, you know, a question came in the mind, you know, seeing how close it was to adjacent houses, then I checked the architectural drawings, and you are planning fire-resistant materials.
Yes.
On your complete rebuild.
Absolutely.
So that's important. Um, you know, as important as the drainage, thank you, Michael, for pointing it out, but fire resistance, you know, and, and when things are this close, so thank you for incorporating that.
You're welcome.
And you also have the sprinkler systems, right, in this one, or no?
No, I think that's.
No, that's another one.
I don't believe so, but it is, it will all be, you know, fire-rated walls due to proximity to property line and adjacent dwellings.
Do you have anything, Ed? Mr. Wallace?
One quick, quick question. I know you're increasing the height to a two and a half stories. Would you confirm the actual height in terms of feet?
Yep, so we actually performed a mean average grade analysis to determine, you know, the average grade as it's written in the bylaw around the structure, and then, you know, essentially measure the height of the roof off that, and that was a critical component in the design of the ridge pitch of the roof, uh, so that, if you refer to our zoning table over here, uh, we're keeping it to thirty-four point three feet, which is under the.
Thirty-four point three.
Which is under the maximum.
Nice job.
Did you rake the sand up a little?
It, it's essentially staying exactly as is, and you just plug the new footprint.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Ed? Okay. At this time, I'm going to open this to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak, either in favor or opposition to this petition? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. Have you anything else you would like to add?
Nope, you know, I, I think it's just a good project. It's an older home. Um, it's, it's really gonna improve the property pretty drastically, and, uh, you know, I think knowing that the neighbors are excited for the petitioners, that's always a good sign. Yeah, that's about it.
Mr. Sylvie. Okay. This is for board discussion only. Gentlemen. You're part of the board.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
I'm fine with it as well.
A-OK.
Yeah, it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Let's talk about the conditions.
Only one condition, so, um, I'll make a motion that we approve case forty one forty eight with the one condition. Second.
So there's a motion by Michael and a second by Peter to approve case forty one forty eight. All of those in favor? It is unanimous. You are all set.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
We are going to do case forty one forty-nine, one eleven G Taylor Ave.
Case number forty one forty-nine, Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, twenty-six Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, February third, two thousand twenty-five, at seven P. M. to hear the petition of Bruce Simmons and Joseph Bazanati requesting a special permit required per section two oh six, two G two, to allow new construction within the floodplain overlay district per section two oh three nine C to waive the required side setback of pre-existing non-conforming structure to demolish existing dwelling and construct a detached, single-family house. Historic District Commissioner, approval required per demolition delay bylaw, modified twelve nine twenty-four on the property of one eleven G Taylor Avenue, shown as lot seventeen on plat forty-five Z on the assessor's map dated January one, two thousand twenty-four in R twenty S zone. The petitioner or his or her representative, any and other persons desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Mr. Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Kevin Flaherty from Flaherty and Stefani, uh, representing Bruce Simmons and Joseph Bazanati on.
Yeah. I, I've already got it marked in here, I just didn't do it. Um, I seated on this case will be Mr. Leary, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, Mr. Peck, and myself. Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, for one eleven G Taylor Ave. Um, so just to give you a little idea of where the property sits, um, Beach Street is kind of this, Beach Street is this street right over here, um, all the way on kind of the, right on top of White Horse Beach. They're on the last row, they have a revetment in front of their house, um, but they're hoping to knock down their existing three-bedroom house that has a full basement and to build a new house on piles. Site consists of four thousand two hundred and six square feet, situated in the R twenty S L zone. Um, it's old zoning, the lot was created around nineteen thirty-one, um, and the whole entire property lies within the velocity zone, elevation sixteen, um, hence why we're in front of the board. Um, we're seeking a special permit for, per section two oh six point dash two point G point two, to allow new construction within the floodplain overlay district. Um, they reached out to us over a year ago, um, and so, you know, with the idea that they were trying to go up just to add a little bit of additional square footage. Um, due to FEMA regulations and having a full basement in the velocity zone, it was just an impossible situation. So any sort of substantial improvement that they were hoping to move forward with would have to be, you know, done up to FEMA standards. Um, and then the other, due to how small the lot is, we're asking for a special permit to waive the required side yard setback, um, as you'll see kind of where everything sits, um, later on in the slides. So this is the, the images, if your back was to Taylor Ave and you're walking up to the property through all the nine-foot right-of-ways, um, this is the front of the house. You can see, you know, the, it's kind of hard to see on this picture, but there's a block foundation right here. This is actually a, a covered bulkhead that you would walk down, you know, just like a typical house would be, um, to a full basement where you could stand in it. Um, so again, it's, you know, it's a little bit rare out there on the beach to have a full basement, um, but, you know, it's an older house, and that was how it was constructed. This is the view from the beach side of the property. Um, the property is right, is kind of the smaller house right here. Um, you can obviously see the houses next to it have been improved throughout the years. All those houses are on piles. Um, ours still sits relatively, you know, flush with the ground. And here's just another image of the property a little bit farther away. You can see there's a pretty significant revetment in front of the property, um, on the ocean side. Um, the homeowner said they don't receive, you know, they've only seen water in the basement once since they've owned it, maybe five or six years ago. It is elevated a little bit higher up. We're at elevation, you know, seventeen or eighteen, around where the property sits. Um, but again, it's, to have a full basement is just. Here is the site plan, it's a little hard to see, let me go to the next slide quick. So here is the existing house as shown right there. Um, you can see the, the decks, the stoops are all in this nine-foot right-of-way right here. So there's a nine-foot right-of-way that runs, you know, as you know, runs all the way through the beach, all those different areas. Um, so the existing deck, the porch, portion of the house, all that sits actually in the existing right-of-way. Um, we're going to pull everything back with the new construction. Um, there's a red line that you can see, I don't know, it's a little tough on the screen, but there's a dashed line that's going to be the new principal body of the house, um, up on piles on this plan here. And then what is here? And then just to add to that last slide real quickly, you know, we can see, we have setbacks that are, you know, extremely close to the property line. Right here, we're four point five feet off the property line. Up front, we're about, we're five point seven. Um, and on the other side, again, the same type of thing, we're six point seven down here and seven point six up this way. So obviously, you know, in this zone, we have to hold twenty feet front, ten feet side, ten feet rear. Obviously, we don't have any, or near the side setbacks on this property with the existing structure. So then to the next slide, so this is where our proposed house is going to be. We're going to pull everything back, so our new stoop is going to be outside the right-of-way. Um, the entire main body of the house is going to be here as shown. Um, everything will be back out. We're actually, you know, we can't conform to the ten-foot setbacks, but we are increasing or remaining exactly the same with where the existing setbacks are. Um, property has a septic system back here that we did back in two thousand fifteen, I believe, right here. Um, it might have been installed around two thousand eighteen, but the design was done then, um, and it sits here, so it was done for a three-bedroom house. We're going to keep the existing, uh, the proposed house, um, at three bedrooms, not increasing the bedroom count or the gallons per day. And just to go through a couple of the, actually, going here, if I go back quick, um, the, the structure is going to be sprinkled, um, just like all the other projects we've worked on the beach, the fire department won't support something that doesn't, you know, they, they can't stand the access and everything else, so we know going in that we're going to have to sprinkle it, so we're going to run a new water line, um, all the way down the right-of-ways coming here, a new one-inch line all the way that connects to the building. Um, the only DPW comment that we received was to verify, um, what the existing line was. They don't know. Um, I talked to Kendra at the DPW, and they have no records on the actual water service that currently gets out there, but it's not too surprising out on the beach. It's kind of, you know, they get into it when there's an improvement done, but for now, they didn't know what kind of line that was. And then here, here. So Bill Fornascheri is the architect. This is kind of the elevation you'd see from the ocean side, right here. This would be the Taylor Ave side of the house. Um, we're not asking for any waivers, um, from the thirty-five foot, foot height requirement. You know, the grade, like I said, is, is relatively high, so it's really not going to be a house that's elevated substantially on peers. Um, the velocity zone is in elevation sixteen, so by code, we have to be two feet above it with that lowest structural member. Um, we always add another foot because, for insurance purposes and everything else like that, so the actual new top of piles, which would be the lowest structural member, is going to be set at elevation nineteen. It really is not going to dramatically differ too much from the foundation that's currently there. I think, um, when we shot the foundation, it was around elevation eighteen point eight. So again, you'll, you really won't see too much of an aesthetic change on the ground, um, based off what the proposed is versus the new. So you won't see, it's not going to be six feet high, it'll be still flush with the ground. Here, here. This is kind of the left elevation of the house. Um, it's going to kind of be, you know, Bill does a good job of keeping it with the aesthetics of, you know, the neighborhood and obviously bringing things up to, to current day, so it'll be pretty consistent with the rest of the houses on that street, on that kind of edge. This is the right elevation here. And then just to go through kind of some of the steps of the process, we've been through Plymouth Conservation, they've approved the project as it is. Um, we've been through the Historic Commission, they've approved the demolition of the house. The Title V, like I mentioned, was done in, well, the septic system that's Title V conforming was done in two thousand eighteen for the three-bedroom. Um, Planning Board had unanimously voted to approve the project, um, and then I think we've sent Denise, you know, multiple letters from the direct abutter to the right, as well as, you know, abutters all in the neighborhood who are in support of the project. And again, I, you know, in a situation like this, they just, they needed to elevate the house to do anything with it, so they really had to get rid of that, you know, existing block foundation. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen. Stand on this end.
Well, the only thing I'd ask, especially after our earlier case on Taylor Avenue, what, what did the people do for parking on this site?
They have designated spaces way out by the, the road. Um, so again, it's, they have a, they have a three-bedroom house out there now, um, so I think, you know, it's really not going to change at all based off what they have. They're just looking to spend a little more time out there, but I think they have designated spots out by the road.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, Peter?
No.
Michael?
Yeah, so a couple of questions I have for you. So I noticed, uh, the halo pilings, you got set at nineteen at the top, and the grade there is seventeen, so they're about two foot.
Seventeen, eighteen in that range, sure.
I was noticing, though, when I went out there, the places next door are a little higher. Has that been approved by the National Insurance, you know, the?
So it, it's in a velocity zone sixteen, um, and so that's, it's a, on a FEMA map, that's how the property is designated.
Yeah.
So I think, you, you think the properties nearby are higher than?
And they seem to be a little higher than that, but.
The, the velocity zone does bounce around a little bit as you're in different areas of the beach.
Yeah.
Um, but again, a code is, you know, from Massachusetts code, you have to be two feet above, and again, I think from insurance purposes, and we've seen even in the last eight years, we've seen. we've seen those numbers move.
Yeah.
You know, every couple of years when they cycle through and do new maps. Um, so we, we put it up at 19. And again, I, I don't know all the insurance impacts, but if they can get any sort of break, then we obviously, you know, I think three feet is the, the biggest benefit that they can get from it.
Yeah, great question. I mean, this has nothing to do with, but is, there's a historical district delay, what, what's?
The house was older than 75 years. So once it's older than 75 years, we have to go in front of the Historic Commission to be able to demo it.
Which you did do and...
Which we did do.
And got approval.
You know, typically, houses are in a little rougher shape. The actual owners have done a good job maintaining it, so there was a little bit of a, a pause because I think a lot of houses have been knocked down in the Taylor Ave, White Horse area recently. Um, but again, it's, the situation with the full basement, there's, there's not much they can do.
Yeah, oh.
But they, but they approved it for the...
Yeah, yeah, you were just saying, well, I had read that and I'm like, I was wondering why it was considered that.
The house was built around 1930.
Yeah, okay.
So they don't know where the water lines are?
So they don't know where the shut-off is and they didn't know, have any sort of records of what water line was there. And that's the DPW. So a lot of times when this is done, you know, when they're, they have to meet with the water department to, before they demo it and disconnect the, the water line, they kind of do exploratory with the contractor at that point. There's really no other way to know and, you know, they, we will be running a new line. Um, as a lot of these Taylor Ave projects, the water lines that run all the way from Taylor Ave through the beach and weave their way through, it's problematic. But again, it's, when things are upgraded like this, it's kind of put more in stone that way.
How do you know it can support the sprinkler system?
What's a new, we're going to be running a new line.
Alright, so, okay.
So it'll be a new one-inch line that runs all the way from Taylor Ave.
Sounds a little sketchy. Good luck.
Uh, it's, it's much easier on paper than in the field. But what we typically do is, you know, when the site contractor is getting to that step of the project, we have to lay out the nine-foot right-of-ways all the way down to the property. So the farther you get away from Taylor Ave, the more, you know, challenging it can be for the contractor at that point.
Anything else? I'm going to open this to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or opposition of this petition? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back for board discussion. Do you have anything else you would like to add?
I think I'm all set.
Jason? Gentlemen, good here. Dave?
I'm okay.
Well, I await, let's talk about these, uh, conditions. There's four, and the fourth one has three parts to it.
I'll find out.
I await the boards.
Go ahead.
So I'm going to make a motion that we approve case number 41, uh, 4149 with the four conditions.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Leary to approve case 4149 with four pre-existing conditions. All those in favor? It is unanimous, go right ahead.
Thank you.
See, what do we have now? Okay. We will now do case 4150. Would you read the legal ad, please?
Case number 4150, the Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals and the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26 Course, 3 Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, February 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM. To hear the petition of Helsom and Chelsea Diaz, requesting a special permit required per Section 203, 9C to expand a pre-existing non-conforming single-family house and to waive required side setbacks to allow post facto addition on the property of 108 Buzzes Bay Drive, Shaw's Lot 2A dash 134 on Platte 130 and the assessor's map stated January 1, 2024 in RR Zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and any other person desired to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this case will be Mr. Leary, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, Mr. Wallace, and myself. Who will be presenting? Your name, please.
My name is Helsom Diaz, I am the owner of the property, as well as Chelsea Diaz, who is my wife, also owner of the property.
Okay, go right ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, we are here today to ask permission to continue with, um, this existing shed that is adjacent, that we, um, put, um, next to our house. It is two feet off of the setback of our, um, neighbor. It is on a slight hill of our neighbor. We've spoken to her and the neighbor surrounding, and, um, they felt that it was alright to them before we, uh, continued with, before we started initiating construction. And, um, I kept it at, um, under 200 square feet, which was the shed line, but I am, am encroaching on the setback and I'm also attaching it to the home. So I'm requesting permission to, um, for the shed to be continued there as, um, um, for storage and so on and so forth. But the building department has asked me to place it as an addition, um, and, uh, yeah.
Okay, questions, board members? I, I see, I, I seated everybody already, but seat, I, I will do it again. Seated on this case is Mr. Leary, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, Mr. Wallace, and myself.
Okay. So, so what happened, you didn't get a building permit?
No, so I did not get a building permit, um, uh, to do it initially. Um, I, my thought process was that to keep it under 200 square feet and, um, but keep it on the side. Um, but my issue was that I attached it to the home and I should have got a building permit, um, for a side.
How far are you off your back line?
From the, 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 the back line of my lot?
Sideline.
Sideline.
The sideline, I'm...
Wherever the back of that is.
Two and a half feet away, to the right of that. Um, if you look at, to the, to the right of that, where it says existing shed there, about two and a half, three feet away.
Well, a couple of things that I, I noticed here when I was looking at it, and I guess maybe even Jason could opine on this, was, um, okay, so one thing they said was the plot plan you have there didn't coincide with what engineering chose. Uh, Jason, was that the case?
I did read the notes, I wasn't quite clear on what, what they found for differences. But they have a final ASB plan on file. So, so there appears to be some, some deviance between some existing plans we have and the plan that was proposed and shown. Plan that submitted here from Webby Engineering. It's not an ASB plan in the truest sense because if you notice, the rest of the home's not located.
Right.
So it just locates the, you know, the structure. So I'm not sure how Webby Engineering came up with their data.
Right. Okay, so, because that's one problem I have is the, the, it doesn't coincide. That's one thing, but, and also while Jason's up, the building commissioner, so, you know, being in the trade myself, okay, so you, you added a, uh, an addition to the house. Problem is, it's on a slab and not a foundation, which, you know, the problem with that is, is somebody else now coming behind you wants to use it as an entry and doing something different, changes the whole situation because of the attachment. The attachment's your problem. And it is awful, that's, two foot three is awful close to the property line, you know, especially for something attached.
Um, yes, sir. Well, to address the, um, the, the other parcel, I actually, when I came here to grab the, the survey from previous to four, it was different. Um, and I believe the deviance there is that when this, when the, when the builder bought these two lots, it was one lot that he split into two, I believe, uh, that was the, the conversation that I had with him. Um, and what was at the town was the lot previously and not this one as before, as it was surveyed after. That was a differentiation there between the two. Um, and I've spoken to the building inspector and I told him, listen, he, he said that, uh, um, we don't know if it's going to approve, first you got to go through zoning. And I said to him that if we do get approved to build a structure that, 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 of that size, um, I'm willing to go through with whatever, um, we need to in terms of the Mass Building Code for, uh, for an addition. So if it will require me to remove the structure and build something new there, then it is what it is. Then I, I, I'd comply with that.
I have another question too.
Sure.
I didn't notice it in this case, but didn't I, I think, in read one of the other cases, a comment from the fire department about the proximity of these gas tanks to a building?
Mm-hmm.
These look like they're practically on top of that building. I don't know. That was a concern, I think, in one of the other cases, you have to have a minimum.
The propane tanks are behind that building, sir.
How far though?
I think they're four feet away.
Okay, maybe, it could be the way I'm looking at it, yeah, I think they require more than that, I think. Because you have gas in there, right? Looks like you dug a gas line?
That's correct, sir.
So, Jason, to my comment earlier on the building code, right? Where this is attached, right? Would that slab even be permissible? It would have to be a foundation, wouldn't it?
It would, it would need frost protection in some way, they'd either buy me some, a full, four-foot foundation or insulated foundation or some specialty, so it would need frost protection, yes.
Right. Which is an issue with this one.
Presumably, I assume that slab is just that, just a slab.
Ed?
I'm not sure what I think.
That's conclusive.
I'm just not decided yet.
Yeah, me. Mr. Wallace?
Uh, I have, I have concerns in terms of obviously where the existing shed was and how it was put in, but, uh, it's, it's my concern. I think I'm hearing answers as we continue to discuss it.
So, um... But you, you moved your water heater out there? Is that a water heater I see out there?
I thought it was a refrigerator, huh?
Um, that was something that I, a water heater? No, not my water heater. It's, um, yes, it is my water heater, but it's not one from my house, no.
It's what?
It's not one from my house, no. I'm s-
Oh, is it a picture?
Yeah, the picture that they took. Um, from what I was pulled by the building department, don't touch the structure, don't do anything to the structure. But if you want to put some stuff in there, that's fine, but just don't change it in any way.
So it's not connected or anything?
No, no, no.
You're storing it there?
Just storing it there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Being used as, the whole intent to the structure initially, sir, was to use it as a shed for storage of lawnmower, stuff like that.
Yeah.
That, that was the whole idea of it. To be honest with you, I didn't want to encroach with my kids' playground in the backyard, so.
Should have got a permit.
Should have got the permit. Um, but yeah.
So, here it is, here's my concerns. Number one, it's an attached structure. That makes it part of the building. And the reason we have these bylaws is because your intent, albeit whatever, is justifiable, good intent and everything, but seven, eight years from now, 10 years from now, you sell that piece of property. And if that isn't up to code and everything and somebody else moves in and they want to change it completely, then we've got a, a structure that is not up to code and now it's going to get changed again. And it only, it, it, it's an inherent problem. And it, down the road, it's a problem for you. Down the road, it's a problem for your Butters. Down the road, it's a problem for any potential buyer. There's, there's a whole bunch of things. So that's my first concern. My second concern is that, um, it was done without a permit, without any forethought, without anything, just, I'm going to just put it up. Well, you have to be concerned about a Butters, your neighbors, what, a whole bunch of things. And that apparently wasn't a strong point at the time. So right now, we're asked, what do we want to do about this? I'm not in favor of leaving that building there, to tell you the truth. I'm not in favor of it at all because of the structure itself. If it was a shed out in the backyard and it fell down or, or, or got changed or something, fine as kind, but that's an attachment, that's part of the building now. So I don't know what the board wants to do, but I'm not in favor of it. And I'm going to have to listen strongly to what they want to do. And I want to listen to the building inspector's input on this because he's going to have a lot of determination in this hearing too. So I will ask Jason, please.
Uh, I'm not sure that we have much input, to be quite frank. I can just give you kind of a synopsis. I don't, um, I know this is something that's been bouncing around our department for, since last fall as an enforcement issue. It came up, um, and they've, you know, the, the, the staff's been working, Jim Spence has been working to try to, um, bring the individual here for this hearing or resolve the issue, right? One way or another. So, um, so the staff's been working with the, the homeowner, trying to get, uh, the applicant here. Uh, that's the best that I, that I know. Uh, I, I don't know, I think Spencer could weigh in if there's anything specific, but, um, um, I think the gentleman did stop when we brought it to his attention. Um, but that, uh, it has taken a little while to get, to get to this, you know, to get to this time and place.
Let me ask you a question. If this was approved this evening, what would he have to do to bring that building into compliance?
Well, there, again, the foundation, if it's not frost protected, would either need to be excavated and then insulated with rigid foam insulation. Um, it may not even be able to be done because it may not even go deep enough for that, which would mean that it would need to be potentially reconstructed or underpinned, things like that. I think one of the things that might have relevance is the cost involved with, uh, making this totally compliant with the building code and then suiting the homeowner's needs might be disparate. So that's one thing that's relevant. I think your point about an addition versus a shed, you build the, the two quite differently. Spend a lot less money on a shed.
Way less.
So, you know, so this addition to the home, compliant with the building code, would need substantial improvements.
And if we approved this, this evening, he would have to bring this up to compliance, correct?
Yeah, the building code is universal, it's statewide.
A question? Yes, please.
You said 10 by 20?
Yes, sir.
Okay, our report says 10 by 21. And that you or someone told them it was supposed to be 10 by 12, but it ended up at 10 by 21. Know anything about that?
I'm not sure about the 10 by 12. The 10 by 21, I think what they're referring to you, uh, referring is the, um, the overhead, um, uh, deasement, but, um, the, the size of the, the shed that we built was 10 by 20.
Okay, just as the applicant alleges their intent was to construct a 10 by 12 addition for the purpose of a shed. However, the construction addition is 10 by 21 feet atop a cement foundation approximately two feet.
Okay. Just a lot of inconsistency here. Well, I don't think so. Well, I don't think so. What, what does the board?
Well, I mean...
I wanna hear. What are you, what are your concerns?
My concerns, it's, it should be denied.
Okay. Michael?
For various reasons.
You know, I, I sympathize with you and I'd, I'd like to approve, but to be honest with you, it's, um, and I went out there, there's no, um, building that abuts it directly. The garage is up on a hill, you know, there's a distance. But, you know, the problem is the attachment. And, you know, again, is, that's why I asked Jason those couple questions. I mean, I don't think it's really can be brought up to the building code is the way it stands, you know? So I have an issue that way. I do have an issue that would we approve this seriously if it was, uh, one that came before us and it said two foot three?
Probably not.
Probably not. So I have to go along with Pete. I don't think I can support it.
Ed?
So to bring it into compliance is gonna cost you a lot of money.
Well, I don't, my whole intention of coming here was to get the appeal, uh, get the approval to build in that, uh, area. But my whole intent of what I'm trying to do is in the conditions of tearing it down and building a new one and code compliance.
So, so your goal is to tear it down and get it to be an addition that's in code compliance?
Correct.
All right.
That would need a new application?
Yeah.
That wouldn't be us. I mean, at this point, we deny or approve what's in front of us.
Yeah, we, you-
So he doesn't want us to approve it. He wants us to deny it, basically. It seems like-
That's not what I'm getting from him.
No.
No?
No. Um, Mr. Wallace, what's your take?
Th- this board really wants to try to help you out, as does the gentleman here. If you, and I don't know the hard numbers, cause I don't know how you, how you built this, or what you did with the foundation, et cetera. It may be far more costly to you to try to bring it up to conformity than it would be to tear it down. And I know the work that's gonna do it. And I would suggest, um, that this board is gonna turn you down under any conditions anyway. And I think they're probably doing you a favor.
Well, here's, here's the situation. I can't put a shed there without attaching it. Here's why. It provides a, what that entails is a, a, a water issue. Because if I, if I build a 10 by 20 shed, a flo- a freestanding shed, and I bring it there, that means that I direct water flow in between the house and the shed specifically there. And that's a lot of water collecting on the side of my foundation. And I don't want that. That's the, over time, that could be a problem. So I didn't wanna go with that. So that's the reason why I attached the shed. Now, I understand the board's point of view, whereas like, you put that there, and let's say you move out of the house, four years, five years, 10 years down the road, we're essentially saying that you can keep that and build off that, and that's grandfathered in, and we don't know what can happen to it. And I completely understand. Um, and I agree with you. I, I, it, that has to be code compliant, and that has to be frost protected, which is why I would say I need to tear it down, but I would like the approval to, with the, to build within that zone.
You can't do it that-
Can't, that's against the law. We just can't do that. We don't have the authority to do that. We can only talk about existing conditions.
Got it.
If you wanna build there, then you have to come in and apply for a building permit, and then they, most likely, in fact, I'll guarantee it, they'll send us, they'll send it to us to talk about the setbacks. That's the biggest thing, the setback right now. Other than the non-conformity, that, and, and the, uh, post facto and all of that, the real issue is two feet off the lot line.
Correct.
That's, that's a big issue, okay? But in order, we, we, we can't say, okay, we're gonna deny this or approve this, and, uh, when you get ready, come on back in and we'll hook you up with something different. It, we just, we can only work on this one petition. And this petition doesn't talk about future building. It talks about the shed now.
Sir, let me ask this. Is there, no, I just don't know this, so I might be asking a stupid question. Is there any language that we can put in that, um, pre-existing condition to say that you can't do anything else to this?
No.
No, you, you know, your predicament you're in right now is, I hate to say it, but it's not a good place to be. Um, you're gonna have, if, let's just say you wanted to put it there and, you know, you would end up before us again anyways. But you would go to zoning and start all over again for a building permit. Cause one is, um, with it being attached, it, like I asked Jason, it, it, it needs a frost protection, which is usually a four-foot foundation. So in other words, it, it involves a whole different building. Uh, but once you get the zoning, because it is so close to the property line, Ian, this is in a rural residential neighborhood. So the setbacks are a little, uh, robust there, I guess, is what I'd say. But it's gotta start all over again. We can't just say, you know, yeah, go ahead and, you know, change it. It, it definitely is gonna have to start all over right at the beginning, right? It's zoning and then a building permit, you know? Now, I'm sure zoning will, would send it here because of the setback. You could, you might have a different design, maybe, that might be more favorable. But again, I hate to say it, but that's where it's gotta go.
One other thing?
Yes.
How did this all start? Did someone complain about it?
I honestly don't know.
Do you know?
Uh, one of the, one of the building inspectors spotted it during their inspection room and brought it to our attention.
Okay, thanks. All right.
So, I mean, I, I, I see. Well, it's gonna get denied, so.
Well, we don't know if it's gonna get, let's, let's take it a step at a time, please.
So, um, I would have to make a positive motion and then go from there.
Hold on a second. I gotta open it to public comment?
Hmm, there you go.
And is either one of you gentlemen like to speak on this? There is no public comment. I will close public comment. I will ask you, have you any further things to discuss? Anything to say?
Um, I think it's up to the board. I see where you guys are saying. I'm, if, if I apologize for, um, for doing it this way. Wasn't my intent, my intent was to only put a, a shed there that wouldn't, I knew that if I put a shed there that, that wasn't attached, there was a hu- there would be a water issue to the foundation of my home, uh, down the line. So that's why, um, I didn't do it that way. Um, but again, yeah.
Any other comments from the board? I await a motion.
Uh, well, I'm gonna make it in the positive and, um, that we approve case number 4150.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, to explain what I assume is going to happen is we can't make a motion in the negative. In other words, we can't make a motion to deny this. We have to make all of our motions in the positive, a motion to approve. Now, whether it gets ratified or not is a different story. But the reason that the motion was made to approve is a legal technicality. So with that, I will, Michael has made a motion to approve case 4150 with, and I didn't even look at the condition.
There isn't a deny.
Okay. With, uh, without any conditions, all those in favor of approving this petition, raise your hand. Um, Wallace? I see no hands in the affirmative. All those opposed to case 4150, please raise your hand. And I, I, I hate to tell you this, but there was nothing we can do. Our hands are tied. Because if we were to approve this the way it is now, first and foremost, you would have to do an awful lot of construction stuff. The costs are, are serious. Secondly, if we approve this and one of your neighbors, an abutter or somebody like that, wants to appeal this, he can, they can appeal this, and it can tie you up. Our fast track in land court is over 600 days. It's almost two years that an appeal can go along. And the expenses for that, wow. So in essence, what happened tonight is probably the least expensive way out of a predicament that I'm sorry you're in.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
And I really am sorry because-
Sorry, thank you.
We all, we're all homeowners. We're all always trying to maximize our ability to use our property. And this board is founded on trying to make that happen. But there are cases once in a while that we just can't do that. And this is probably, Peter?
We don't like him.
Okay. Can you remember when we've had to do this?
This is the first time in, in, uh, since I've been in, since 15 years, I've never-
We hate you.
I've never done-
I recall one, you know, last 15 years.
Yeah, and I've been here 20 years and I can recall just one. So, you know, our board tries very hard to make things possible for everybody, but this just went a little too far. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have one more informal, and that is, uh, case, gentleman, please. That is case number 4131, Darrell Vadel, 20 Sunset Ave, to, um, address a condition. Would anybody like to weigh in on this?
Who's presented?
Uh, this is informal and it's, it, uh, yes, go right ahead.
Good evening. John McLeod, contractor for Darrell Vadel, the homeowner. Um, back in December, you approved a roof over an existing patio.
Mm-hmm.
And a side, um, addition. She decided she wanted to go straight up off the existing footprint. Um, I thought with Jay, it conformed to zoning, but he said since it was already his EBA permit, we had to come back here. So that's what I'm doing here.
Okay. Gentlemen? Anyone?
So the one we originally approved was, there was an existing deck there?
Yes.
That he was just gonna, uh-
Roof over that.
Make an entrance, wasn't it?
Uh, roof over the deck.
Yeah.
And that's where they needed the, um, the ZBA approval, cause it didn't conform.
Right. Now, what you're trying to, or you're going to put, um, a second floor, uh, floor on top of-
Over the, over the existing footprint.
Okay.
24 by 32, which conforms to zoning, front setback and side setback.
Right.
Gentlemen? Anybody?
So I guess, well, we'd have to decide whether you guys feel it's a minor or major modification, I guess, for us. That would determine.
Ed?
Building inspector.
Major or minor?
Major or minor, Jason?
I'm still trying to just figure out exactly Spencer and I were chatting about, if I could ask a few questions to the board?
Yes, please.
So, uh, I remember we chatted on it briefly about it. Um, in this case, the only change from the original zoning board of appeals plan is the second floor addition on the home?
Yes. And that front left corner, the entrance, on the first floor, there's no addition. Put on the second floor, it overhangs that. But it still meets side setback and front setback.
So we have a couple of cases that are similar to this. And so what we have is, is someone comes for a relief. The, the relief is granted, and then the project changes. Um, in this case, the project's changed. The work that they wanna do is in and of itself conforming, but the conforming work is connected to the relief work. And so if you look at the, at the relief after it would be completed, the, the project would not match the relief granted without, in my mind, some sort of connection, um, from the board, understanding that the finished product is not gonna look as though it looked when you, when you actually heard the hearing. And so, um, it's, it's, maybe some people wouldn't be concerned about it, but it's details that I think somebody looking back at this project would, would wonder, wha- how did this all happen? And, and I don't feel comfortable giving a permit to alter a special permit that's been granted, um, without the board's understanding that that's what would you be doing. So I could, I could grant them a, a building permit to add a second floor to it. Um, because it's, again, it objectively sounds conforming, but it would be altering your special permit, which is already kinda, uh, an umbrella over the parcel. So, so again, in my mind, I just wanna make sure that the board understands that that's what they're looking to do, is alter the pathway they previously laid out to you. Um, they told you before they wanted relief. They told you there's only a single story structure. Now they've changed their mind. It's now a two-story structure. So at the time that you were listening to the hearing, you may have felt differently if the impacts were a two-story structure versus a single structure. So-
Major.
So totally up to you guys, if, if this special, special permit, which was granted, was on a two-story structure, would you have granted that relief? I, I don't know that. And that's for you to opine, in my opinion. If they wanna revert back to just this, they could move forward through it. In my mind, the second story, although it's conforming, I think being so close to, and this has not been exercised and completed, that it's for your, still for your, your purview. It's a lot of fine details in there, but-
Yeah, but, but it's an understandable process.
Yeah. It's not huge, the issue. It's just a matter of, would you have looked at this pro- that, this relief differently, you know, if there were a, a two-story structure? And will that two-story structure change the closeout on this, on the special permit?
Mm-hmm.
Additional parking requi- and whatever other things may have been risen. It doesn't sound like there was major relief granted at the time, but again, it's there. We have another one that may end up back here in the exact same kind of context, in my mind. Somebody changed, you know, changed pathways. They wanna do substantially more. The work's conforming, but it's still connected to a special permit.
Okay. Gentlemen, having heard that- Having heard that.
I don't know that I would have disapproved it. I mean, it, because if it's a conforming, what they want to do for the second floor, that part does conform. I don't, I don't, I could go with minor, but just be over.
I, in a different My opinion is that we want to try and make this so ironclad that if anybody wants to step on it twenty years down the road in a legal proceeding, that they have no grounds. And if we leave loose ends, and to me, minor modification of a two-story, of a second story is not a minor modification. It's a major modification, okay? And if we just go ahead and, and find that way, then he can reapply or redo the permit and then it's covered. But if, if, we're, we're in shaky legal ground, as far as I'm concerned, if we call this a minor modification. That's my, in my opinion.
So the test
So the test is, would I look at the relief sought differently with the second story addition? What Jason said, would I look at the relief sought for a special, when he applied differently with the second floor? From my standpoint, it wouldn't make one difference at all. I think it's a major thing, putting out a second floor. But if the test, the legal test is, would I look at the relief sought differently by this additional floor? I don't think I would have changed my opinion at all.
Then, then we grant a, a permit like that, but
I, I
I don't know whether I would have approved it or not.
I know from my personal being, my personally, I would one hundred percent approve it. So, if the, if that, say like, if the test was, how much wood do I got to put up? Or how much work do I got to do? Then you're right. But if, if the, if the test, the legal standard is, would I have looked at this relief sought differently by the second floor? If that's the test, I one hundred percent would have agreed and put the, the second floor to be the same.
Really?
But if the, but if the test is, if, how much work I got to do, how long the project
It was just going to be a porch with a roof over it.
Yeah.
And now it's going to be a two-story addition. You'd look, you would look at that differently?
I, I would have approved it. If the, would I, would I have denied it or approved it with this second floor?
I don't know now what I would have done.
So
I don't either. And, and that's the problem. I don't know what I would have done because I don't have the information in front of me at the time.
So that's my
So the porch, the, the size of this is remaining the same. The size is remaining the same.
Yes. All this happened before I got here, not, not that's an excuse. But she just decided, when she was spending this money, she decided to go up. The bedroom count has a chance. It's a very small cottage to start with. She's, she has a two-bedroom now. She's going to have one bedroom on the first floor, one bedroom on the second floor with the bathroom.
And, and so, but I mean, my question is, the porch underneath is remaining a porch?
Yeah, nothing changing, nothing's changing except for that little entry. The second floor will be over that. The porch stays the same. It's all in the, in the footprint. There's no overhang, there's no L's, there's no, nothing else except for right over that entry.
Maybe.
I think it's substantial. Just because it doesn't, it doesn't match the initial petition, petition or the initial approval. It's, it's very different to go to two floors.
And would I have approved it? Probably, but it's still a substantial change. It's a substantial change to the, the structure of the building. And yes, is it in compliance, building code-wise? Sure, but it's still a substantial change.
All right.
That's my opinion.
Wouldn't be really strong, would it?
No, I'm, I'm flexible.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, I mean, I was on the edge. I mean, it'd be, it is a, it is substantial.
It is.
But it does conform.
But I want to ask you one question, not trying to circumvent anybody, but if tomorrow, I come in here tomorrow, take the porch roof off, I pull a regular permit with Jay, am I going to look like a morrow when I come back in to get the porch? I mean, to be honest with you? And I'm not trying to make you change your mind. I'm just trying to tell you, if that's what I have to do to do the permit, that's probably where I'm going. Is that going to offend anybody?
Could you say it again?
All right, so I come to Jay tomorrow, I come to you guys tomorrow. If you guys vote no, I come in and say, you know what? Take the roof out, take the porch roof off. I'm going back to Jay, by right permit, I'm going with the second floor. Then I'm going to probably come back in for the roof again. I'm not trying to play games here. I'm just trying to say, if that's what gets me from point A to point B, to go ahead and put the addition on.
From point A to point B is you have a, an open zoning permit.
Yep.
With certain stipulations on it.
I agree with that.
Point B is the end, okay? You're at A now. You want to get to B? Do what the permit says. You want to do different than that? Then this is where you end up, here, okay?
Okay.
And we have to decide whether it's a little change or a substantial change.
Okay.
And come back tomorrow, come back down the street. And any of that is not pertinent to what we have to do tonight.
All right.
Question for Jason?
I want to ask, that's all.
Yes.
So, Jason?
Yes.
So, maybe I understood something, but let's say he did what he just suggested.
Yes.
You're not going to issue a building permit tomorrow because of this decision already on file.
This is where I think there is debate based on, it's, it's challenging to come to a definitive conclusion. That's why we're here, right? That's why I think it's important for the Board of Appeals, for the, this board, to, to, to be aligned with the views that, we're all working together, right? Because there are these, these gray areas. So, Mr. McLeod's absolutely right. The request to reconstruct the, or to build a second floor in conformance with the setbacks is as of right. The only caveat is the attachment of this new porch that's not as of right. The construction of the porch was granted relief to, to be put on to the house. If they abandon that relief, effectively, they say, we just don't want it anymore. We're not going to do it. We're just going to do different stuff. They now could do as of right without this and just abandon this and say, it's no longer, we're not doing it. I wouldn't be able to give them a permit for it because they're not doing it, but the as of right, I, I would. I think it would still convolute the property. If I'm a property owner, I'd want this resolved, either abandoned formally or, or addressed formally. But building the two at the same time is exercising the special permit, which means that it has that impact on it. And so I think if they're, if they want this relief granted, it's within your right to say that we granted this relief with the understanding of a single-story structure. You haven't even done it yet. You haven't put this porch on yet. You haven't exercised it yet. But they could build this porch, do this thing, come back to us in a year, knock the roof off and put the second floor on it. So it's a bit of, it's a bit kind of, you know, I'm, I'm sending him here and he's going, but I can do it anyways. He does some, have some validity to his statement, yes. So it's just, it's just a bit convoluted where you're trying to change past, once you go through this very formal process to the zoning board of appeals, and, and then you get a formal decision and say, I just want to do something different. And then you come back to us and we're like, oh, how do we do this without getting ourselves in trouble? And trying to make sure, our job, when, when this is completed, is to ensure that every T is, is crossed and an I is dotted as it says in here. And if there's any deviance from that, we have to account for that deviance. And that was, that's where my anxieties were created, when somebody comes in and says, I want to change things. And I don't mind if you say it's okay. I'm okay because you're my backstop. And that's, that's why I kind of punt and say to individuals like, John, let's go here and talk it out. And if you guys think it's important and you want to talk it out in a public hearing, then do it. And if you don't, then, then it's informal and it's, it's not, you know. So this is not a huge issue to me. I just want to make sure that if the board thinks it's a big issue or would have changed their view, given the scope that's now presented and doesn't feel as though it was a bait and switch kind of thing. I don't think that was the intention here. But again, we're just trying to really be cautious about issuing permits, getting it right.
Now, this has been filed with the town clerk. This is, you know, this is now, I think, the registered. I mean, this decision's attached to that property.
Mm-hmm.
So, it, something has to happen to unconnect it, you know, and kind of close the loop, like Jason said. I don't know whether it's just a document to say, we no longer, the owner no longer wants to do this and that closes the document, or needs to come in because it's a substantial. But I think it's floating out there. It's incomplete and it's already gone with the registry. It's, it's attached to that property. So this decision needs to be unattached, so he can just go and do
Or, or
Or we modify.
Modify. And that's what we can do tonight, is modify that. And, and to David's point, this is why I am, I'm hesitant. Because we've seen in the past, things happen and ten, twelve, fifteen years later, they pop up again and it's an entirely different circumstance and maybe different people, and it gets real expensive. And as a property owner, I don't want anything popping up on mine thirty years from now or whatever. And I'm sure nobody else does. So I'm just trying, I'm very, very particular about trying to make sure that all the documents, nobody can, can question a few years later. We have permits in this town that are fifteen years old, that are being questioned now and we're getting sued for.
I understand that part.
So, I want to try and make sure that all of the paperwork is sufficient enough to stand that test.
Okay.
And to the board, that's why I am pretty sure that it's a substantial change. Yes, please.
So Jason, so if he just didn't build the porch, he could just go up and, and a second floor?
Again, this, we're, we're talking, right? I have to see really details and permits and stuff. But the setbacks are twenty, ten, ten. And anything that's pre-existing that is afforded, those protections can rebuild at twenty, ten, ten.
So he can go up right now if he doesn't build the porch, the second floor?
Again, in conformance with a twenty-foot and ten-foot side and ten-foot rear setback.
So then he goes
That's why when I submitted the permit to Jason, I was actually surprised. He said, you have to go back to zoning. I go, wait a minute, I conform to zoning now. The other part was a special permit for the porch. I said, okay, we're going to build the porch. But now the new part is we're going to conform to zoning. So that's why I was a little confused.
So, so right now, he can, assuming he goes to the, to the, it's, so the setbacks, right now he can build a second floor, irrespective. And so, so, so we're going to, so we could do that by right. And then, say, next July. So it's good, the permit's good for two years, so for, and we just approved it in two thousand twenty-four. So in July of two thousand twenty-six, can he then go and build?
That's a good question.
He can't. So we're just wasting our time here.
I, I don't, I don't know. Because if he's altered the structure so much that you can't
And so what happens when you look at title? So I'll read the zoning board of opinion. So I'll, I'll get the title extract going back fifty years. I'll look at all the, all the zoning boards. And then we pull the property card. We make sure that the permits are closed. Then we go to the health department, make sure there's no open order of conditions. That makes it clear. So if he did the building, closed out the permit, this was filed, it's no issue legally. You can get a loan. The bank will lend you money. You can sell your property marketable. So if you guys want to do this, fine, I'll go along with, but you're wasting time. And, and I see this not as a problem. You can build it right up and then two years, twenty-three months from now, you can do this porch. And we're going to say, now you got to come back. This is substantial. You got to spend more money. You got to cause this taxpayer to spend a whole lot of dough to get this done. Why did they come to us in the beginning? I understand. They were expanding a non-conforming structure, expanding it. And Jason, you're saying now if this goes out the window, he can just expand it on his own?
No, they were expanding to the lot lot.
And this is, I may take a different position than Ed, but that if you don't, if you, if you record this special permit
It's recorded. We did. Yeah.
Record it. And then you don't do it.
It just goes away?
You're effectively under the law abandoning it. You built something different. I, you can't go back and then exercise the special permit after you've abandoned it. It depending on the circumstances.
Okay, yeah.
So, so I, I think, I agree that you may be able to do it in the future.
Within twenty-three months, within twenty-three months, it's not abandoned. He can, he can go up right now without, with, with by right.
But when someone voluntarily changes a project and does not exercise that, does something completely different, it is abandoning something. So instead of me building a single story, I build a two-story. I can't go back and make it a single story because I have a permit for it. It's a two-story now. It's too late. It's changed. You've done something different.
Jason, what do you want us to do?
Yeah, come on, we've, we've wasted
All right, so this, you can see there's the, I, I'm sorry to delay this and keep you guys here any longer, but I can take either side of the fence. What side I choose, I want to be aligned with this group so that when these continue to show up in the future, as I said, I have another one right behind this that we'd be debating very similar, you know, semantics. We have one with Meg Sheehan that's very similar as well that's popped up. So we've got a few of these kicking around. So if you said, hey, we're not worried about it. Let him do the conforming thing over here in this lane and the special permit thing in this lane. And that, the two, they, they never affect each other. We're not worried. We would have granted the relief irrelevant because all that's conforming. That, none of the work that he needed or is asking for should have been, would be listed as relief. So it sounds like the relief is similar in context for this porch. But that, again, it's, if, if you don't think it's an issue, then, then I can, I can follow that along.
One, one other thing? Can we go back to where we were twenty-five minutes ago? There were two of us at least that felt that this was a major change. There you go.
So, yeah, we've, we've discussed it long enough. Go ahead. This is it, Paul?
All I want is, whatever we decide now, on the future cases, we do the same thing.
Exactly.
And I, I want, I want Jason to make the decision and you make the decision and not come to us and spend this for an hour.
No, it's our decision. We'll make the decision.
Well, I just, all I want is this to be consistent. So whatever we do today, let's, let's have it down.
Well, you don't think we're being inconsistent?
No, we have, we have cases coming up. He just said
But that's later.
I know, but I'm just saying, I'm saying, I want, I want us to be consistent.
Well, the consistency, if it's, an individual considers it a major modification or not, that, that's not going to change whether, I think it is and you think it's not. So, I, I don't think that's being inconsistent.
Nor do I. And every case is on an individual
That's right.
So when they're going to, so, so they're all going to come here, basically?
That's what we're here for.
Yeah, but how many cases does the commissioner think that it's non, it's not substantial, that we don't see? How many, how many do we feel, how, like, how often does that happen?
So I just had this, this situation and I have two others that are very similar on special permit cases.
I think it's a, a substantial change, period.
So I, I'm just going to, just quickly go through. So with the original permit, you know, I'm just trying to think back, was to, he was expanded for the porch on the front of this.
Roof over the existing
Did, it didn't fit the setbacks or the setbacks did fit? It was just that it was a non-conforming use?
The setbacks of the porch were, were not met with that porch addition.
Right, but what I'm saying though is, okay, so the, the porch and the addition would have conformed. It was only here because it was a non-conforming? No, they wouldn't.
They, they were in the setback requirement, yeah. The, the structure itself, like, it's thirteen They were in the setback requirement, yeah, the structure itself, like, it's 13.6 and then 10.2, and it looks like, I mean, the building itself looks like it's 20 feet back, and again, I don't have those exact numbers on this plan. So it was only the addition they wanted to put on the structure that needed relief. The pre-existing non-conforming, I'm not sure if it was size, it's only, it's less than, you know, 6,000 square feet, probably doesn't have front edge, so the lot's probably non-conforming, but it looks like the structure might have been conforming, you know, 20, 10, 10, to the time at the time, it's the addition that needed the relief.
Okay, so, I assume two of us are still on a major...
And John, your first proposal that we talked about was to do both at the same time, right?
Right.
In other words, put the second story on, and put the porch and the addition on, all in one project.
But is the major part conforms? Does the ZBA still get concerned over that, if the second addition conforms to zone? Right?
In my opinion, the board doesn't concern itself with the second part, because we're only concerned with what we permitted.
Approved, okay.
Okay? And therein lies the problem, we're getting outside, in my opinion, we're getting outside of what the permit said.
I got you.
And once we do that, we're stepping into real murky ground.
Okay.
Anybody could appeal that, and whether it is sustained on an appeal, or overturned, or whatever, it's a huge problem for the property owner, and it's expensive. And so, so, all right, they've made a decision that they want to do a little less additional work, let's just get the paperwork right, so that their additional work will always be in conformance. So I'm going to now, if, do you have anything else you would like to add?
That was it. I appreciate your time.
Jason, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, no.
Mr. Wallace?
He doesn't want to get involved.
Ed?
Absolutely not.
Perfect. Michael?
No, I'm not going to add anything at this point, go ahead.
I await a motion.
Well, it would be you to ask whether we, whether it's a major or minor.
Well, I...
I'll make the, I'll make the motion that this is...
First of all, seated on this, I wrote...
With Tom was on it.
You, Ed, me, Pete, myself.
Okay.
So Tom was the only...
Five original votes.
Yeah, Tom was on it.
Yeah, okay. All right, so it's...
So you made a motion?
Made a motion that this would be considered a major modification, either vote for it or not.
All those in favor of a major modification?
Heck, I didn't know that.
It's four to one, I'm sorry.
Don't apologize, you're doing your job, I respect you guys, it's all right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care. You guys do a nice job.
Who seconded?
Pete didn't have a mic on.
That's true.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business, oh no, we have minutes, and I don't even know where I put them.
You know, the problem, Denise, is you're talking to a group that was used to seeing minutes every year or so, and you're too efficient.
Yeah, yeah.
And we appreciate it.
Every...
We appreciate it, but...
Well, I will say, I have looked at the minutes, nicely presented, I move approval of the minutes from December 2nd.
Who seconded?
And I abstain from this?
I have a motion by David and a second by Michael to approve the minutes of...
December 2nd.
All right. All those in favor?
One abstention.
Did you, Denise? Now, that concludes the business of the zoning board of appeals for this evening. Thank you all, good night.
This was a difficult...